All right, folks. Thank you for joining us this evening and indulging us in a little extra time for a meeting that we held before this one. And so this is a regularly called and convened Greer City Council meeting held this evening, August 27, 2024. Having called the meeting to order, I'm going to ask that Councilwoman Judy Albert lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and then an invocation for council. If you would like to join us, you can stand with us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do heavenly Father, we come to you today so thankful for our many blessings that we have received as a nation and as a city and as a state. We thank you for those that have come out to the meeting today. We pray that things will go as you would have them go for our meeting. I pray that you will bless each and every one that is here present tonight, the young team that is here representing their victory. And we pray, dear Lord, that you will lead us and direct us in the way that you would have us go and that you will bless our country. In Jesus' name, amen.
So, as you may can see, we have a slightly younger audience than we typically have for one of these meetings. And I suspect that some of them probably need some supper and got some homework to take care of. So I'm going to move a special recognition up in our meeting and want to introduce you to some young men that have accomplished something that I think is of note. So if you are a member of the 12 and under Greer Baseball All-Stars, come on up here to the front, please. And I'm going to ask Jeff Howard. Boy, I have Jeff Howard and Chad Stags and Dan DeRosa to come up as well, too. Yeah, you can spread out, guys. Y'all all play alongside the field? Probably finished fourth. Oh, okay. So if you would raise your hand when I call your name, if you're here. Milo Strangager, Jackson Howard, Easton Shealy, Howard Brunson, Charlie Stags, McKinley Wade, Jay Thompson, Miles Grun, Ethan DeRosa, Dalton Edwards, and Ryan. Get these young men around with applause. This is your 2024 Greer Baseball Club 12 and under All-Star Team. They are the second team in the history of Greer's park recreation and tourism program to win a Dixie Youth South Carolina State Championship and qualified to compete in the Dixie Youth Baseball World Series. This marks back-to-back year for the city of Greer has claimed a Dixie Youth Baseball State title. Dixie Youth Baseball was founded in 1950 and is one of the largest sanctioning bodies for youth baseball in the nation. This is a great accomplishment for our program, our city, and our recreation department. Recreation Department, stand up, guys. Where are the ratings y'all here raising? That is significant and we appreciate it. Kids and coaches of this team competed all summer and hopes of representing the state of South Carolina in the Dixie Youth Baseball Series in Louisiana. I thought it was more in Louisiana than Milwaukee, so. Through dominant pitching and big bats, they claimed that spot. Greer competed well in the Dixie Youth Baseball World Series, defeating the states of Texas and Mississippi. At this time, we would like to recognize the 2024 12 and under Baseball Club All-Stars on a tremendous run, representing the city of Greer and the state of South Carolina this summer. Give them another round of applause. They're going to stay here and all have to ask you.
Them tall boys, they request birth certificates.
They drove here.
They drove here. Is one of them a pitcher?
Chad? Thank you, sir. We appreciate it. Boys, good luck. We're going to see you again in, what's the next league?
Major League.
Major League. It's a big truck.
Yes, it is.
State champs.
That's why I bet some of them.
That was such a good one.
Yeah.
Steroid chips.
Steroid chips.
That's awesome.
We have a lot of programming that goes on and certainly our youth sports are important to this city and to the development of those young men. And we appreciate the time that our staff and their coaches give to them, as you heard in the bio, so to speak. Only the second time that we have had a team to go that far in the World Series and representing Greer. I believe they came in fourth in the nation. Was that correct? So quite an accomplishment and we're always proud to recognize those young men and young women that get a chance to come before us for recognition. And we will look forward to seeing many of those young men play in baseball here for local high schools and who knows where they're going to be playing after that. So we thank them and their parents for the sacrifice that it takes to do that. I think they spent about seven days, maybe a few more, in Louisiana in August. I can assure you, that probably wasn't the nicest experience, but they had a good experience down there and are truly champions. With that, then, we are going to move to public forum. I appreciate you letting us flip-flop the agenda just a little bit this evening, but public forum is an opportunity for you to speak to council in regards to an item that is on the agenda. We have four people that want to speak tonight. I'm going to simply ask, since there's only four of you, that you be considerate of the other three while you are speaking and that you limit your comments in some regard. And if, you know, there's been the same point made multiple times, that you consider that as well, too. So with that, as I call your name, if you will come to the podium, we ask that you give us your name and address as a matter of record. And Jim Guyer is the first to appear this evening.
My name is Jim Guyer. I live at 103 Thurman Court and as part of Hartwood Place subdivision. And Mayor, first of all, I want to thank you for not missing my name this time around on the agenda. But I am grateful to stand here and speak before you all again to have that privilege. A lot of us moved into Hartwood Place when it was one of the only subdivisions out in our area at the crossing of Abner Creek and Brockman-McKlyman. And we still love that area, still love our subdivision. A lot going on around us. A couple of years ago, we stood in opposition to putting warehouses on one of the corners of Abner Creek and Brockman-McKlyman. Thank you to the council that that did not happen. Now, we're again standing before you just to express that you would seriously consider the annexation of the property that's on the agenda and consideration. And that's just simply because of the additional congestion it would add to our area, not that we are opposed to development. We expressed that last time. We are very much in favor of more residential and residential that can add to our community or even recreational. And our difficulty with this particular annexation is the amount of congestion it continues to put on that intersection, Brockman-McKlyman and Abner Creek, without improvement. Now, I understand, council, you have no control over the improvements of the roadways in the state of South Carolina, even in that area. But by adding more to this area, we, a lot of us moved into Hartwood Place because we had easy access to the interstate. Now, the interstate has easy access to our community because we are the back route. And if everybody gets rerouted, they get rerouted onto tractor trailers. We already have the dump trucks from the quarry down the road from us. So we'd ask for serious consideration as you do consider the annexation of how many additional residential properties that you do allow in this annexation. I appreciate your time and consideration.
Thank you, sir.
Next one to appear this evening is Becky McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilman. I'm Becky McLaughlin. I live at 208 Lindbergh Court in Hartwood Place. And you received a letter from me, and I'm not going to read the whole thing, but know that it came from my heart and I wanted to speak to the quality of life that we've enjoyed on that hill since I've lived in Greer for 12 years and 11 years in this location. And as Jim said, we have become the back road for every accident on 85. And while that quarry is not in Greer, it is in Spartanburg County. Sometimes we feel like the stepchild of Greer and the stepchild of Spartanburg County because our kids go to Greenville schools and we are out of the mainstay of Greer. But down there, we've got a quarry which explodes unannounced and shakes the house. And on my run this morning, within five seconds, three of those big wheeled dump trucks came roaring by Hartwood Place. So the quality of life, of course, is concerned when we start to think about the traffic at that four-way stop. But it's more what we thought we had when we had a hayfield to our north and a farm to our south. And none of us knew there was a quarry there, a mulch sales place went in beside us, and woods to the west. And within four or five years, it's all gone to houses and quarries and mega mansions. So we just ask that you look at this and consider the fact, we love Greer, we don't want to go anywhere. It's retirement for an awfully lot of us. And some of the remaining residents have kids growing up that are going to be turning left coming out of Hartwood Place. And the traffic on that road is incredible. So thank you so much. I haven't been too intimidating. I stood in front of middle schoolers for 50 years and tried to teach them algebra. So sometimes I come across a little strong. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
My name is Rachel Massey. I live at 659 Crossbuck Trail. And I'm going to be pretty brief. I'm very supportive of residential growth in our area, especially when it's opposed to the prospect of warehouses. My main concern is the possibility of extremely dense townhomes coming in. And while I would love to see it approved for something residential, it would be amazing if we could limit the amount of properties that would be contained in one acre. And that's really my biggest concern, not just our quality of life, but the people who are going to be coming in and living in those homes. We're in a mixed-use subdivision. I don't want to say mixed use, but we have townhomes and single-family homes in Saddlebrook Farms. And the things that people deal with when they live in townhomes, it can get tense sometimes. As our HOA president, I deal with neighborhood altercations quite often. And there is a lot that we need to keep in mind when we approve those types of developments. Again, I'd love to see houses, homes, townhomes, I'd love to see the merits to be able to sell their property, but I'd really like us to take a pause and consider if this density is right for the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker this evening is Scott Gillespie.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. My name is Scott Gillespie. My address is 110 McDaniel Green, but I also am very familiar and active in this immediate area. As some of you may know, I have developed much of the property in this area, starting many years ago, 10 years ago, something like that, with the ledges, the Redwood Project, and then Saddlebrook Farm, and then the Vines Creek, and Sylvan Woods, which is my, Sylvan Woods is directly across the street from this property. And I always made an attempt, a sincere attempt, to pay attention to what's going on around me. Yes, I'm, hey, I'm pro-growth. I'm a developer. That's what we do for a living. But I think there's a time and a place that you need to look at the details and not just carte blanche, say, oh, this is a zoning that would allow this. And it's okay. My concern is the way the zoning is in this is that they could find an economic reason why they can't do it. And once that zoning's in place, then you're looking at almost 400 units. Could be done. And could it be done? It could be done. I know because that's my business. So I'm encouraging you to deny the zoning application. I will say this, there's lots of creative ways to economically, marketability, and aesthetically make that corner a winner for everybody. And I have said it at Planning Commission, and I said, if anybody wants to kick around some ideas with me, not that I need to do it, but I am totally ready to do it. Because again, this is not only my profession, but it's my passion. And I want to see things done right and done in a, let me use the word, realistic and functionally, aesthetically pleasing way. So that's my pitch to you, and I hope you will do that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, council, let's see if we can get back on track here just a little bit. Departmental reports are contained in your packet. You have those this evening. Administrator will be glad to answer any questions you have in regards to those reports. And we will move on from, okay, I was looking all over for somebody. You were right there behind the podium. So Ms. Woodruff joins us this evening for our financial report.
Good evening, Mayor and council. For month ending of July 2024, the general fund cash balance was $15,365,663. The revenues for the month were $724,221. And expenditures were $2,510,000 for a 2% over budget expenditures. Moving on to the hospitality fund, cash balance of $1,349,951, revenues of $323,949, expenditures at $4,370. Stormwater fund had a cash balance of $3,124,442, revenue of $13,642, and expenditures of Any questions that I can answer?
Thank you, ma'am. Floor's open for discussion or questions.
Yes, I ask this all the time, but on the hospitality fee, what was our, the revenue, because this is the first month of the budget year that we're hearing, what's the revenue versus budgeted revenue?
Yep, we collected more than we budgeted.
How much?
Let me go to that page. I don't know if you have this up in front of you there, but we projected $295,540 and we came in at $318,781.
Okay, so what is that percentage? Anybody want a percentage above budget?
32.
You did that in your head that fast? I don't believe that, but I'll.
Check that.
Okay. The reason I'm asking is because I believe that number is a leading indicator of how the economy may be going. It indicates how people use their disposable income. And although there's an increase, what we have to watch out for is that in food pricing, it's up, you know, 20, inflation is 20, 22% in that. So just because we have an increase, that could just be the increase in costs being passed along to the consumer. So we'll just watch that as it goes along.
Others? Thank you, ma'am. Council, it's easy to catch up when you skip ahead of some of the things that are on the agenda, so we're going to back up here closer to the top of the page and consider some minutes of the council meeting. In front of you this evening, you'll have the minutes from the August 13, 2024 workshop and the August 13, 2024 regular meeting. I'll entertain a motion that we received, the August 13, 2024 workshop minutes.
I move.
Motion and a second. Any items of note for the clerk? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. And we followed with a regular meeting on August 13, 2024. I'll entertain a motion that we received, those minutes as well, too. I move. Second. Any items of note for the clerk? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Council, any items that I have missed up until this point? With that, then, let's move on. We had a request from Mrs. Parr or Ms. Parr to appear as a petitioner this evening. She called earlier today and informed the clerk that she was going to be unable to make the meeting, so we will move to the administrator's report. Mr. Merriman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. Couple of things this evening. First of all, wanted to recognize the Greer PD. We host the Upstate South Carolina Law Enforcement Memorial Softball Tournament annually, and we had it this last weekend at Century Park. The tournament raises money every year for families of officers skilled in the line of duty here in the upstate. So we always want to remember those families and those officers who serve so bravely. And along with the police department, if you'd like to learn more about our Greer Police Department, you can still sign up for the Police Academy through the 29th of this month, which is two days from now. Pardon me. Classes begin September 5th and will be on Thursday evenings through November 21st. We also offer the Civics Academy, which is a holistic approach to learning about what the city does. And registration for that begins on, it's actually, registration's still open, first class is on the 5th as well, and they meet on Thursdays from 5:30 to 7:30. Just a reminder, the For Greer Initiative has its own website, forgreer.com, and you can find all the information, submit any questions or suggestions you might have relative to those projects. We are going to do the grand opening for the Super Road Fire Station on September 18 from 10 to 12, so please come out and join us for that exciting event. And Greer Relief will be doing a ribbon cutting on September 6 from 2 to 4 at their new location on Berry Avenue. There will be live music, tours of the facility, the blood mobile, and a speech from our Mayor Daner. And then I want to shout out to our kids in the Creative Advancement Center's after-school program at Tryon Rec Center and those members of Victor Baptist Church who so selflessly donated a lot of welcome-back school supplies to these kids. They had stickers and snacks and all kinds of goodies for the beginning of a school year. So I want to thank our Parks Rec Department for working so closely with Dan Dudley and his group to continue to provide this needed community service at Tryon Rec Center. Mr. Mayor, council, that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Council, let's move to items of old business, the first of which is the second and final reading of ordinance number 32-2024. This is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of a certain property owned by Frank W. and Tammy Merritt located at 1035 Abner Creek Road by 100% petition and to establish a zoning classification of MDR for said property. Ms. Cotty joins us for this conversation. The floor is yours, ma'am.
Thank you. I do have one update. Planning Commission held a public hearing for this item last Monday evening, and they did recommend denial. I have the slides from first reading that I'm happy to pull through, and I believe the applicant has a short presentation if you're interested in that as well. But I am happy to answer any questions that you may have.
So while we generally recognize those that are either directly associated with a project or indirectly through ownership at the first reading to make themselves known so that we can go through this exercise, but I think it is appropriate tonight that we do it on this particular reading for second reading. By show of hand, is the owner of the property a representative of the owner of the property with us this evening? Okay. Thank you for joining us. I think, council, that in the interest of both council and those that are here tonight, that this comes before us with a denial from the Planning Commission, that I will allow the developers to make a presentation to council. And so with that, if they will come to the podium, I would like for you, if you would, please, to identify your company and your name would be a matter of record for us as well, too. Thank you.
So good evening. My name's Garrett Stallard. I'm the Director of Land Acquisition and Entitlements for Dreamfinders Homes, formerly Crescent Homes. So I'd like to apologize, I misspelled Greer on my PowerPoint presentation. And then this is Nick Myers, with Seaman Whiteside. He's our engineer that's helping us do the design on this project. Really, guys, I'll just make it brief. I think a lot of people in here are very familiar with who Crescent Homes was. Two of you guys live in the neighborhood across the street. And I just wanted to give you guys just as much confidence as I possibly could to let you know that we have no intent of steering away from who we are. You know, these first bits of slides are just an overview of Dreamfinders, when we were founded in 2008, and the growth that we've, you know, hit in these last 12 years. It's pretty substantial. We're operating in nine markets. You know, to save you guys from all of, you know, that fun stuff, I wanted to, you know, show the slide, just to really show our involvement with the communities in which we enter markets. You know, we're, Dreamfinders Homes, corporate offices in Jacksonville, excuse me, almost at Orlando. Obviously, we're the official home builder of the PGA, Jacksonville Jaguars, Florida Gators, that's where our hub was. When we relocated to the Carolinas, you know, we've reached out to universities. So same thing here in Greenville. You know, we're, I didn't put on the slide because I don't know if it's officially announced to the public yet, but it's been sealed as that we're going to be the official sponsor of the Greenville Drive baseball team. So I just thought that was an important thing to note, just to show that, you know, we are invested in, you know, this region. And, you know, as of today, we're the 14th largest builder in the Pro Builder 100. And where we're at in the Greenville MSA, we're like the 15th largest builder. And I think that's important to note because that's not who we want to be, obviously. We want to, you know, provide really good quality homes for the residents throughout the upstate. And we don't, we know that the only way to do that is to, you know, show good faith to the people of the towns that we're building homes in and doing it the right way. I, you know, it seems like, again, everybody is very familiar with Saddlebrook Farm. I mean, this is the product that we intend to do across the street. It was extremely successful. It's a gorgeous neighborhood. intend to do across the street. It was extremely successful. It's a gorgeous neighborhood. We are not trying to change who we are as a builder by any means. So I just wanted to provide you guys with a little bit of insight of the quality of homes that we build. And, you know, we don't have to watch this whole PowerPoint presentation. Again, I think we're all very familiar with the community. But the next slide obviously shows the property in which we're looking at getting annexed and rezoned in relation to where Saddle Brook Farm is. Again, that's the type of product we want to continue to build in this area, and this is our conceptual layout. I don't know if you guys had a chance to see that or not, but again, it's to fit the product that we built at Saddle Brook Farms. This is 155 lots. We're not, we're not trying to cram in density here and make this a builder-friendly site. We want to make it a really gorgeous site that you guys are really proud to drive by. And I understand wholeheartedly traffic impacts and concerns, and, you know, we will make sure that we do everything in our power to do it right and make, you know, avoid any sort of major delays getting improvements done on the site. And that's really it. That's just the site plan layout of the townhome product that we built. And then I just wanted to open up the door for questions if you guys had any.
All right. If y'all would just stand by, that'd be perfect. If you can either just stand behind Ms. Cotty or grab a seat, and if we've got some questions as we begin our deliberation, we'll be glad to call you back up. Ms. Cotty, an overview, please?
Sure. Sorry, we have to switch.
Okay.
Thank you. Sorry about that. So again, this is an annexation request for one property. It's a little under 25 acres at the corner of Brockman-McClyman and Abner Creek Road intersection. This is the current zoning map. To the north is manufacturing and logistics. South is primarily DRD along with the Sylvan Woods neighborhood, which is larger lots. And then to the west, it's currently residential suburban, although you will be seeing a rezoning request for traditional neighborhood in your November meeting. Future land use, this is designated as mixed employment. Anything south of Abner Creek Road is designated as suburban neighborhood. Here are two kind of street views. Again, this is a very long, large property, so it's a little difficult to capture. And then as far as surrounding uses, we kind of discussed, there's various residential neighborhoods. There's a fire station directly to the north. It is in proximity to Vines Creek neighborhood, Saddle Brook Farms. Staff did recommend approval. We do feel that medium density is compatible with the future land use map and think it serves as a transition point between some of the more intense uses and zonings that are located to the north, and then the suburban, less intense uses south of Abner Creek. And then again, as I noted, Planning Commission did have a public hearing last week, and they recommended denial. I did include a summary of their conversations in the minutes that you guys received. Their biggest concern was the potential maximum density that came along with the district, not necessarily the proposed project. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
What's the exact number on the maximum density?
Maximum? It is seventeen and a half units per acre, so just according to the rough acreage, it would be 432 units. And as I told Planning Commission, this density, as you saw from that layout, there's not any possibility of getting to that with townhomes. That density would only be achieved by a multifamily.
Did that number include the house and drive all staying there, or do you know?
The, so I believe that that layout was 155, or I think it was 140 without the house and up to 155 with, if the house were gone and there were more townhomes in place of the home. Their proposed is around 6.2 units per acre. But again, that is just the project. The zoning district is what allows for the density.
So in the new zoning ordinances, there have been some very slight changes in regards to denial. Can you brief Counsel on exactly what the denial means and the process for moving forward in some regard?
Sure. In the previous zoning ordinance, when a rezoning came forward and was denied by Counsel, they had a waiting period of one year before they could apply again. With the Unified Development Ordinance, we took that, we took that regulation out, and so there's no waiting period. If a project were to be denied or fail, they could apply again the next Planning Commission cycle for a different zoning district.
Okay. For the purpose of discussion, then, I'll entertain a motion to receive for further discussion.
Second.
And a second. Floor is open for discussion.
Ms. Cotty, can you speak to what, you know, if a project like this was approved to move forward with a zoning as is, can you speak to what road and intersection improvements would likely be required?
Sure. This development was required to do a traffic impact analysis because it's an annexation request, so they have to do it upfront instead of further along down the road with their site development plan. So DOT did review that traffic study because they are, they own and maintain both of the roads that it would potentially have access to. One requirement that came from that study is this development will not allow to have an access onto Brockman-McClyman Road. They will be limited to two accesses onto and from Abner Creek Road, so that's the first. The second is, the study did show that the intersection is operating at a poor level of service. Unfortunately, a signal is not warranted quite yet, but SCDOT and staff do believe that that would be kind of sometime in the near future, seeing as all the growth in this area. But what it did recommend for mitigation was a southbound right turn lane from Brockman-McClyman onto Abner Creek Road. From Brockman-McClyman onto Abner Creek. So being a four-way stop condition, SCDOT is not comfortable with this improvement at this time, and they do believe that soon a roundabout or a signal will be warranted, and this improvement would have to be torn out and redone. So they have suggested that the city collect payment and lieu for this right turn lane, and then use that money towards a future signalization or a roundabout, at which time it's warranted.
I don't want to, this isn't on us ultimately, I know, as the city, so I don't want to ask you to speculate too much, but do you feel like whatever may be requested and approved on the other corner, would that be the tipping point for the intersection?
I'm not certain. It really depends on the density and how many units that they have. But I will say that DOT, for them to call attention, for it to be a requirement that they think it will be triggered soon, I do think in the next couple of years, in the next one to two developments, there's a good chance that it could be.
In the traffic study, did you say they wouldn't allow a driveway on Abner Creek, I mean, not Abner Creek, but on Brockman-McClyman?
That is correct.
Because the sketch they showed us had a driveway on Abner Creek?
That is correct. That was the schematic layout that they used for the traffic study, but one of the requirements of that study has come back. So they haven't redone their site plan because, again, they're just going through kind of this process to see if they can do their project. But yes, you are correct. It does show it, but they would not be allowed to have that. So it would be a slightly different layout.
Now, was Saddle Brook Farms a DRD? I know it said Vines was DRD.
Yes.
Was Saddle Brook DRD, too?
Yes. Saddle Brook was also a DRD. So as you recall, before our Unified Development Ordinance, we did not have zoning districts that allowed for townhomes by right. So the majority of townhome projects that have come in to Greer over the last seven to 10 years all utilize the DRD zoning. And that was one of the key kind of changes that we made in the UDO was to create zoning districts that allowed it by right and kind of defined the density, the type, the height, the lot width that those would be appropriate for.
So does the medium density allow for multifamily?
It does.
Okay. Yeah, I was talking with some of the Planning Commission and just trying to understand their ideology behind it. And I totally understand where they're coming from. And now that they've shown us a site plan that doesn't fit anymore, it makes me a little concerned about what the new layout, will the numbers still work in their favor changing the driveways around? I mean, you only get one shot at this thing, so I totally understand where Planning Commission is coming from on this one.
What, I know that we still have the ability, or I assume we still have the ability to do a DRD versus a zoning which is by right. I heard some concern about the property, the project going forward as, say, the end of this meeting tonight, but tomorrow morning, the developer sells to someone else. And then, so it's whatever is by right. But so where is our DRD? Where is it? Where is our DRD, which I thought was working very well for those developments?
It is still an option in the Unified Development Ordinance. Again, staff is not very supportive of a DRD zoning.
Why?
If, well, they're an enforcement issue, because they're each basically their own conditional zoning. So it's very difficult and time-consuming.
Wait, 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 wait.
To review plans, elevations.
Tell me about the enforcement. I don't, I don't understand that.
So reviewing plans, permits, all of the site development plans, the preliminary plat, every building permit that comes in, we have to check that statement of intent and site plan and FDP to make sure that it conforms. So it's just a much more time-consuming process.
If you mentioned this to the owner and the developer, that that would be an option that I think would be more palatable to everyone because, and since I've been on Counsel, I've seen it happen, you know, you do a, there is a parcel of land and it has a zoning, and then all of a sudden, it's either changed for something, yeah, this is going forth and this is, and then it doesn't happen, and then it's changed again and changed again. I mean, is that, since we have a new regulation now that says, okay, if the requested zoning is shot down, so now they can go back next month, correct, for Planning Commission and request another zoning?
They could. Staff did not recommend DRD for the reasons I mentioned before.
Okay, well, okay. But is staff? Please don't ever tell me again that it's too much work, because that's the main reason I'm hearing. So that is an option, correct?
It is. I will say that staff did recommend traditional neighborhood zoning district when we initially had conversations. So I did not recommend DRD. However, I did recommend a lower-density residential of traditional neighborhood.
Why did they, why did they not?
I can't speak to that. You can certainly ask the developer.
Well, I will say I do appreciate them being forthright of what their density number is, you know, because now the cat's out of the bag. We know what they want to put there potentially. So, I mean, because they could have just said, we want to do a development here, and no one would have known what the density level was. I appreciate them saying this is the type of product. But now, the argument for DRD or seeing, you know, whatever direction we decide to go, I think they've got a product that they can mimic. I mean, if they've done Saddle Brook Farms, they know what products they put there. They know what materials they use. If they were, based on what they're telling us, they're mimicking that, I think DRD potentially could be appropriate because they have something, you know, finished product. So it could potentially be an easier fit for DRD. If they've never done work in the city of Greer and didn't have any kind of resume, I wouldn't say that. But since they have something that's just so close, and they said specifically there's going to be a similar product there, I think if we go DRD or the other zoning that you said that was a lower density, I think, I think that would work potentially.
Traditional neighborhood, is that, that gets them to 10 units per acre?
Yes, sir. That is the maximum density of traditional neighborhood.
But the issue was, and you and I talked about this this afternoon, was the lot size is what, just explain again what the challenge is with the lot size with that on this project?
Sure. In both suburban neighborhood and traditional neighborhood, the minimum lot size for attached housing, which is townhomes, is currently 3,500 square feet, which is extremely out of line with every townhome development in Greer and also kind of the surrounding area. Again, that was an oversight. It is on our list of amendments to bring forward for the UDO. Currently, we're slated to bring those to you in November. And we do have at least two other developments that are kind of on hold right now, waiting for us to update that lot size. So again, that could be one of the reasons that they did go for medium density. I believe they were also just interested in having more flexibility. But again, you would have to ask them. But that is an issue.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. You feel like that would, when did you say we're going to try to address that, do you think?
So we are planning to take the list of UDO amendments to Planning Commission in October. Unfortunately, the meetings are back-to-back in October, so we can't, we won't get them to Counsel until the first meeting of November. And then after that, it would fall under Pending Legislation Ordinance, so the first meeting in November.
And you said 3,500 is, is that smaller than typical or bigger than?
It's much larger.
Okay, yeah, that's what I was, so how do we handle if they want to condominiumize the lots, where the house, you know, they retain ownership of the land itself, but the house, like you do a condominium?
So not having a lot, it would be treated more like multifamily, so if you were not going to have lot lines.
But if that was the case, which zoning would be appropriate at that point?
Again, either medium density or traditional neighborhood.
Okay.
Traditional neighborhood allows for townhomes. It also still allows for multifamily. It would just, again, be capped at 10 units per acre instead of 17 and a half.
I have two more comments for the developer. Guys, don't come, this is a comment. You don't have to get up here, you know, ask you a question. Don't come with anything that says Greenville. You have our name on it. We're nobody else. We're Greer. Just realize that, that, you know, these folks in here, we're, we all, we consider ourselves family, and we want everything to be right for our community, not just for your company, but for the community, for the residents. I'm not going to let y'all off. I understand that the growth in this area is phenomenal. And I'll, you can verify this, because the land is not developed. Whether this goes through tonight or some other time, something will be there. One of the things that you have to consider in your decision, you move there because there was the hay field, you know, and I get that. But we don't control what other people do with their property, especially when it's not in the city. But that tract of land, along with a lot of other lands around here, is in, that's in Spartanburg County, is unzoned, meaning that one day you could wake, and I'm not saying this would happen, but this is a potential. You could wake up one morning, bulldozers are being out there, and they're doing whatever and pretty much putting whatever they want to on that tract of land. Thankfully, probably the price of land prevents some of that, but that could happen. Thankfully, probably the price of land prevents some of that, but that could happen. Now, to SC DOT, you know, I always take what they say with a grain of salt because, you know, they say sooner, well, there's sooner maybe five, 10 years down the road. I got that. My thinking is, from what I've heard and from what I've heard the planning commission say, is that if there was something in place, like a DRD, it would have been much more palatable to everybody. Because you don't have that uncertainty of what could happen. With the DRD, that most of that uncertainty is taken away.
Others?
You first.
Okay. Just two more questions. One, have we figured out what that fee or DOT fee is yet? Or do we know what that, the developer know what potential that number could be yet?
Don't believe so, no.
And then second one, does this site have sewer access? Or is there a large barrier to get sewer to the site?
You would also have to ask the developer. I know CPW has asked about this site, so I do believe they can serve it, but I'm not sure if there are costs or challenges.
I'll let Paul speak on behalf of that for the sewer.
Paul Talbert, do I need to state my name for written address?
Yeah.
Okay. 102 Two Notch Trail on Mountain Powdersville. All right, so a couple, can I just respond to several of the questions that have been stated? Councilman Booker, make sure I say this right. About called you commissioner. Okay, so in, was the, was the presentation in the packet?
It was.
Okay, so you can look at the packet to address the question of the access to Brockman McLeimmon. That's been, that is the layout that you're looking at. So, there's not an adjustment of the lots in differentiation to the previous access that was granted or that was supposed to be off of Brockman McLeimmon. That was one. Thank you all very much for the discussion about the LDR, I'm sorry, not the other, the, the lot ratio. And so, that's going to, I'm going to come back to that. Related to the traffic, you asked about the cost, tentative cost, and I would tell you that it's probably between $150,000 and $250,000. That's a general estimate. And certainly, the next development they're going to get asked to do, if we don't do it, the next development would do the same based on what DOT had shared with us in the traffic study. What was the other question? I don't want to forget. Sewer, yes, I'm sorry, CPW. So, there is access, we have access by right of an easement to a sewer main. I wish CPW was in attendance. They're not, but it would be helpful. They would be able to weigh in on this as well. And then I've got one other thought that I might share, and I don't know if it's possible. So, I'm just suggesting this for the, you know, y'all chew on it, and if it's good, keep it. If not, we can spit it out. But if the hesitancy is based on a proposed density that may come, you know, and we are representing a single-family builder that's going to do a single-family product that is, has no interest in multifamily or even a build-for-rent product. This is their product to sell to homeowners who want to be invested in Greer. And that's the way that we understand it. That's what we signed up for. I know things can happen, but one of the things that came to mind was, what if you make a conditional ruling? I don't know if you have the teeth to do that, so maybe not. Okay, I was wondering if that would be possible with the impending site amendment or the amendments to the UDO. That's all I had then. I'll sit tight. If there's any other questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Anything else you want to add? Okay, thank you. We appreciate you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Counsel, questions, comments, discussion?
Counsel, I know we all remember a little over a couple of years ago, the other corner there, when we discussed at length the warehouses and we kind of had a full-blown discussion about, you know, the slight shift in direction that we had in that area in future land use, just with the way that that area had developed residentially over the past several years. I'm very convinced we made the right decision on that corner there. We talked about, I know you remember, we talked about at the time, knowing that we needed a good transitional usage on both of those corners. That's, there's a very real sense in which that's kind of the epicenter of District 3 in many ways. I know Mr. Guyer sends me pictures there, sitting there at the, at that intersection many times, at different times of day, with lights stacked up back-to-back-to-back. So, I fully understand that. It's a very, it's kind of a coming-and-going kind of intersection right there. And so, for those reasons, and I know you agree, we have to get those two corners right. And we have to be very specific, in my opinion, to get that right there. I know we all have an opinion about density that way, and I'm all for appropriate justified density, for sure. We know that going north of Abner Creek there, a higher density than south of Abner Creek is going to be justified. It's not, and I don't hear this from my neighbors that I have the privilege to serve. I don't hear that the 6.2 is necessarily the problem where the density is concerned. My biggest heartburn after kind of thinking more since first reading is that open-ended 17 an acre. There's a big difference between 155 units and 430 units. There's a big difference there. I was open-minded and optimistic that this might be that transitional project. Maybe it is still in some form if we can figure it out. But yeah, that just, I'm not super comfortable at all, you know, with that open-endedness there. Yeah, good to see. Good to see many neighbors as well. Thank you for coming out.
Yeah, I really, it's unfortunate the timing of this request. I think traditional neighborhood would be a great fit for this. And, you know, if we could minimize the impact and keep it to, you know, the 10 units per acre, I think that would be more palatable and would make more sense for this area. And it would be great, you know, you and I discussed this this afternoon about the roundabout or whatever it happened to be. Yeah, I agree. I don't think we spend the money on the right turn if this development comes to fruition and then, you know, immediately have to tear it up as the lot on the other corner comes into the city and is developed. I mean, there needs to be a permanent solution because obviously, there's a, we're hearing and seeing that there is a problem there and that's not a fix to it. So, like I said, it's unfortunate the timing. I wish this was, we were in November, we were addressing this and taking care of the size of the lot, but we're just not there right now.
I will.
Go ahead. I was just going to say, that was a good suggestion that he made, that we could do it conditional, but unfortunately, we don't have that ability.
I will say, and this is just my perspective and feeling, that 100,000 to 200,000 is a little light on the cost for a turn lane. And then another thought that just, just putting that out there, because I'm very intimately familiar with this area. I just grew up less than a mile away, is the right-of-way concern on the mansion side and on Brockman McLeimmon. Because I can tell you, we may have right-of-way on the Saddle Brook side, but that wasn't a conversation that was discussed, I guess, with DOT is actually dedicating. If there is a traffic circle, are they going to give the right-of-way on the front end? Which 100,000, 200,000, in addition to right-of-way, may make sense for a trade-off. But I think there's some more conversation that needs to happen around that.
Yes, DOT did also request that they design the site so that it would not impede on right-of-way if a roundabout could come in the future. So, that would be something we would consider during the site development plan.
That's why.
Again, the layout that we saw is conceptual. It has not been through Planning Advisory Committee.
That's why I just feel DRD is just more, I mean, you iron all these things out right now, you know. That's just my thoughts.
Yeah, I understand why and appreciate what we're trying to do in the UDO with the DRD situation. I think there's some situation where it may still be a tool to use. And this feels like it may have been in one of those times, perhaps. Again, just, you know, kind of holding my breath with my neighbors over the last couple of years. What, I mean, my goal here, everyone I hear from, all y'all, we understand something's going to happen on those two corners. It just needs to be the right thing and needs to be the right thing at the right time that gets us some, the improvements that we need to keep traffic flowing, improve safety, et cetera, et cetera. So, I appreciate that.
Questions? Comments? Discussion?
Oh, I will tell the developer, I do appreciate your project and think it'd be a great asset for annexing into the city, yeah.
Others?
Excuse me, excuse me. It just leaves it too open-ended with the way it's set up now to go from up to 250 to 425, 430 homes with slight changes, with no other things or other means to come and make any control over it. From what I've heard from most of the residents, either through email or phone, they're not so much opposed to the developments in the area. It's just maybe single-family homes taking up less space in, you know, more, less homes in a certain area. So, yeah.
Others? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
A question before we vote, since this is, a yes is voting for the ordinance as written?
Yes, and it is, it would require a
Supermajority.
Supermajority to overturn the planning commission.
And a vote in the negative is?
Is to deny.
No.
Mr. Booker?
No.
Mr. Hopper?
No.
Mr. Dumas?
No.
Mr. Bettis?
No.
Ms. Albert?
No.
Mayor Danner?
No.
Counsel, the second item before us this evening is the second and final reading of ordinance number 33-2024. And we'll take just a moment before we consider that. Okay, let me see where we were here. Second and final reading of ordinance number 33-2024. I'll entertain a motion to receive. Second and a second. This comes without particular additional information, anything that we need to know, Mr. Mayorman, in regards to the second and final reading of ordinance number 33-2024?
Mr. Mayor, counsel, the only thing I would add is a recommendation from the city attorney, specific to sole source in procurement, that letter, it would need to be, to be considered a sole source. A document from the department director would need to accompany justifying a sole source procurement. But that will be, that letter would be provided to me, at with the city administrator, under this code and that the city administrator would have the authority to grant the sole source with justify, submitted from the department director.
Does this require an amendment to ordinance number 33-2024?
Yes, sir.
Counsel, second and final reading of ordinance 33-2024 would require an amendment to proceed in regards to a single-source procurement.
Do we need a motion to amend, Mr. Mayor?
We would, we would need a motion to amend, yes, correct. Floor's open for a motion to amend.
Well, I'll make the motion to amend what Andy said.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Can you just go over real quick, you said single source. I mean, what is it called now? And then just kind of quickly go over some of the, kind of the highlights or high points and, you know, what's, what we're striking and what's being added to this?
Well, I've got Katrina here speaking further detail on the entire thing. But largely, the ordinance itself is designed to raise the spending threshold for so many of our procurement processes that are just daily AP-type business transactions that we take. I think the previous amendment to the procurement code has been a number of years. And as you know, the prices of things have gone up. So, this is an effort to put more autonomy into the hands of those folks that are actually managing budgets on a day-to-day basis and give them more flexibility to purchase products for the city within their budgeted allowances. So, that's kind of a general overview of what we're doing with the procurement ordinance. This specific recommendation from the city attorney was to authorize the city administrator to approve a sole source procurement in the event that we seek to procure whatever good and we only have one bond. That's, that is, again, this is a matter of
You talking about a bid?
Could be a bid, could be just procuring, just a good or service that we would ordinarily, I mean, mulch might be a great example. Mulch would be, would be something that, in this particular situation, we don't have bidders. We have, we open it up for bid, one respondent. That's what we're talking about. And this council's had to consider a couple of sole sources that have been of minor monetary consequence. This is just an effort to move faster.
When we, on our ceiling of pavement, that's a sole source. And then when we buy John Deere equipment for the golf course, that's a sole source.
This just increases the threshold on the number. I mean, what is, what is the base number now and what is it moving to?
Ms. Wood, if you want to bring us up on that, please.
So, we went from 1,000 to 5,000 for the departments to be able to go ahead and get purchases without the three quotes. And then it increased formal bid from 3,500 to 50,000. And then it allows the directors to submit anything that council approved in the budget, up to 75,000, without the administrator having to sign. 75,000, the administrator would still have to sign. And you did have in your first reading, the sole source, excuse me, sole source section in here. The only recommendation is to add whether the administrator approves the purchase. Is that one sentence?
Okay. Counsel, I feel like we can, we can use our amended second and final reading of ordinance number 33-2024 with the caveat that the single source was addressed. In this particular case, we're adding authorization of the administrator.
Yep, the sole source payment was authorized by the city administrator.
As long as it's authorized by the administrator.
And this doesn't change our process to make this public and to have bids and to try to attract as much attention as far as the work is concerned, or mulch or whatever it is, correct?
No, it does not. This just tries to speed up the process for staff. They, a lot of times, are running into, especially these lower bid amounts, we can't even get anybody to respond. So, they're sending out multiple emails, just waiting, waiting and waiting, and then, you know, delaying purchases. And so, we're just trying to close that gap and be more efficient.
Thank you.
Others? Ms. Duncan, have I got a second on the amended ordinance? We do. Floor's open for discussion. Questions? Comments? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, let's move to items of new business, the first of which is the first and final reading of Resolution 26-2024. This is a resolution of the City of Greer, South Carolina, directing the Planning Commission of the City of Greer to conduct one or more studies and make recommendations regarding the development of an impact fee ordinance, which shall be developed in accordance with the requirements of the South Carolina Development Impact Fee Act, codified in South Carolina Code, Section 11. codified in South Carolina Code, Section 6-1-910, and providing for other related matters. This comes as a resolution to authorize the planning commission to hold these hearings. I'll entertain a motion for the first reading and final reading of resolution 26-24.
So move.
Motion and second, floor's open for discussion. Questions? Comments?
Why do we have two separate ordinances here, Mr. Mayorman?
So what you've got in front of you is a resolution, what you're considering now that, that is council's request to planning commission to begin the study. What you've got at the, the next agenda item is the, is the first reading of the ordinance from the council's perspective, to begin the process, initiate the pending ordinance doctrine. So what, from a, from a process standpoint, you will give this consideration, this resolution consideration, which will send it to planning commission. The next reading will be your first reading of the ordinance implementing the impact fees. We will then have the public hearing, we will have, we will treat the process like with the comp plan. And then once that's done with planning commission, we'll bring it back to this council for second and final reading.
When do we actually tie a quantity to the fees?
What you've, what, in this, in the second
Maybe I missed it, I didn't see it.
In, in the, in the second reading is when we will have the number in there, so we will
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
And what does the, what does the study consist of? What exactly, what is the process for the planning commission? What exactly are they going to do?
They will have, they, they will be the ones that, they will hear what you heard in the workshop on impact fees. They will understand the methodology, they will understand how the consultants arrived at the dollar amount. The whole process of the impact fee is the study that's going to be done.
Will those numbers change?
The, the maximum supportable fee will not change. So no, those will not change. So what y'all will consider will be some variation of the maximum supportable fee, either the maximum fee or some number below that.
Kind of seems like we're voting for something that kind of contradicts or kind of overrides one or the other or something. It just, because you got the one asking them to conduct one or more studies, making recommendations, and then you got one imposing development impact fees in the City of Greer. So it's just, just getting ready so that when they come back with the study?
Yes, ma'am.
Kind of like we just did tonight with our, with our annexation, planning and zoning. You know, we held the first reading and it all passed. Went to planning commission, they came back with their recommendations, said denial. And then we considered it one final time. So it's kind of the same process.
The only difference is the, the resolution in this case, Mr. Airwood is right, is the resolution, the impact fee ordinance in South Carolina statute requires it to be treated like a comprehensive plan. So it has to, you have to have a resolution telling planning commission that council wants to have a comprehensive plan. And that's what you're considering in this motion right here is the resolution portion.
So we shouldn't have done this prior to now?
No.
Okay.
We could have, we could have, but it's just a, it's a one half dozen the other.
Counsel, floor's open for discussion. Questions? Comments?
Just as a recap from the retreat or the planning session that we had, I mean, the, the conversation was, this is not going to have, based on the study, any impact on continued growth inside the city?
No, sir, it won't. It, I mean, it's, it will be an additional fee that needs to be, that will, that will be paid on residential, both single family, multifamily, and then commercial properties, retail, office, industrial, et cetera, per thousand. So it will be evenly distributed, but should not have, if, if your, if your question is, is the expectation that it has a, a choking effect on growth and development, the expectation is no.
And that's not been the case in other communities, communities that have adopted this, correct?
To my knowledge, no, sir, not in South Carolina for sure.
And I think that just recaps the workshop. I mean, that's essentially the information that was shared to us in that.
Andy, in the workshop, I don't know if they really said this, and I, maybe you remember if they did. When it came to single family versus commercial, did they give us a split of how much they thought that would be? Whether it was 60% of what we do already is going to be retail, commercial, and maybe 40% is single family? Did they give us an idea where that split was, was coming from?
Of 100% of impact fees collected, what would be the, the shared, borne by residential versus commercial? It's in the study and I can find it.
I feel like it would be commercial more likely because that's typically how we pay for a lot of things we do. So I'm assuming my gut would say commercial or retail would bear the brunt of it.
What would, what just makes, I would add a little color to that comment is that the, the commercial, retail, industrial, office side of the impact fee would not be subject to parks, recreation and tourism fee. So that kind of thwarted, so it wouldn't be an apples to apples comparison.
Okay.
And the residential's based on per lot where everything else is square foot.
Square foot feet is an equivalent residential.
Yeah.
Counsel, further comments? Questions or discussion of resolution 26-2024? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes.
Counsel, let's move to the first reading of ordinance number 35-2024. This is an ordinance imposing the development impact fee in the City of Greer in, in acting Article 4 Development Impact Fees of Chapter 46, which is land development by creating Section 46-400 through and including Section 46-407 of the Code of Greer, South Carolina, related to development impact fees invoking the pending ordinance doctrine and providing for other related matters. We have had some discussion in that. For the purpose of further discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So move.
I have a motion in
Second.
Second at this point. Floor's open for discussion or further questions or comments in regards to the first reading of ordinance number 35-2024.
Mr. Mayorman, what is the timing of the impact fee? When do we actually receive it or is it?
Impact fees received when the development holds a building permit per lot. So it would be part of the fees paid on a per lot basis. In the case of a multifamily development, again, when the, you know, if you got building A of a, of a townhome development or a apartment, when those permits, that permits pulled, it would pay on the units in there.
On a development like the one we talked about tonight, and let's say, you know, they figure something out and we have those, whatever the, the number was we were shooting for, let's say it was 150 units. Is it, or let's, let's use another example, let's say there's one that's already in the city as an example, and we've, we've already annexed it and it's just sitting there. Do they take down each lot just before they build it? Or do they take them down in sections? Or how, how do they take down lots typically? How would a developer take down a lot?
For multifamily?
Well, just in, just in general, and I guess I'm asking that because let's just say we've already annexed certain properties inside the city, would they be?
But, well, so that's an interesting question, and I think it's valid because we did have discussion about DRD and there is the question of the entitlements of the property. If the property has been entitled through DRD or something along those lines, would they be subject to the impact fees? I think legally, the answer would be no. Now, if it was a straight zoning type development that has been annexed and just sitting or, or only partially developed and only part, part of the permits have been pulled, the remaining lots would be subject to the, the impact fee. So moving forward, if there is a, an annexed entitled piece of property under a DRD or some sort of other entitled development, they would not be subject to the impact fee as exists now. But any future annexed properties would be. So when you're asking the question about how do they take it down, you know, a lot of these larger builders just come in and pull building permits on 10 lots and just pull the permit. They will pay all the associated fees along with that.
I guess that's what I'm asking. So if they pull the permits on 10, let's just say today before this is adopted, and then they pull another 10 a month from now and this is adopted, they pay the fee at that point. Gotcha.
Others? Questions?
And as far as the annexation fee, I know we have some of those agreements in place too. Does that have any type of
Yes, sir, so this, we would no longer be considering an annexation fee. However, those existing agreements would still be honored. So if, that's another example, if, if a property had been annexed with an annexation fee under development agreement, that would not be subject to impact fees.
Others? Questions? Comments?
Just one question.
Yes, sir.
Just to, so I can digest what you said. So you, you feel that DRD potentially would not be subject, is that what you're saying?
An existing DRD.
Oh, existing, okay.
No, sir.
Okay.
Tomorrow, yes, sir.
Okay.
Under the pending ordinance doctrine that you're reading tonight, yes, sir.
I thought you were saying, okay.
On the DRD side, I mean, what is the, we talked a little bit about the risk going into that. What is the, why, why are we not kind of going down that road? Outside of staff having to provide a lot more oversight, is there, is there a certain level of risk involved in DRD now?
No, I don't think so. Are you talking about when, why we didn't add it in the UDO? Or, or as it pertains to the impact fees?
Well, not, not really specific to the impact fees, but just kind of like the case we were just talking about where there was, you know, they were going to come with 6.9 units per acre and then the medium density was going to give them 17, you know, as an example. And so we could have used DRD as a tool, but it's something that we didn't necessarily want to get involved in.
That is a long discussion. I don't know that I'm prepared to opine on why, why we got to where we are with that. I would go as far as to say, and I'll leave it at this, is that the, the intent of the UDO, Airwood, don't throw anything at me, was to, to provide staff and the developers more clarity in what they're doing. So they didn't have to really kind of cobble together a zoning via development agreement, right? And that, the intent of the UDO was to be able to work within larger areas to get to the end result. And so I think in this particular case, this evening, and not to, not to speak too much on that, I think while yes, I think a DRD could have provided the, the blanket of security that y'all have had in the past as a land use regulation, it still didn't answer the transportation issues sufficiently in my mind because of SCDOT's control of that intersection. So again, we're, we're talking about a previous agenda item that's been, been handled, but I think conceptually speaking, that's why we see that the DRD is not an integral part of the UDO.
First reading of ordinance number 35-2024. Questions? Comments? Discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes.
Counsel, last item before us in our regular business meeting this evening is the first and final reading of resolution 27-24. Mr. Buchanan, our civil engineer, joins us for that discussion. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and counsel. Today, before you is the acceptance of the roads inside the Oakton subdivision. The project started in 2020. The project is located off East Gap Creek, approximately 1,450 feet from the intersection of East Gap Creek and Country Club Road. For reference, it's also right across the street from Greer Golf. It is inside Council District 4, all utilities are in and the streets are paved. All housing construction is complete with 90 out of 90 lots being built out. Our staff has inspected the construction and believes it meets the city standards. Therefore, staff recommends that Oakton Drive with a length of 837 and a half feet, Clarebrook Court with a length of 1,850 feet, Apple Creek Trail with a length of 488.4 feet, Maple Grove Way with a length of 399 and a half feet, all be accepted into the city street system for ownership and maintenance. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, first and final reading of resolution number 27-24 comes with a recommendation from staff. I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So move.
And a second.
Second.
Floor's open for discussion.
Got a question. This is the first time I've seen where a forest main is located in the roadway.
Okay.
How do they, how do we handle those? Is that CPW agreement?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It'd be treated just like a sewer main, gravity main being in the right of way. They would have access through their utilities.
Others? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Counsel, we have no matters for executive session this evening. Stand adjourned.